Okay, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Ed and the Common Council, the joint meeting for February 2nd, 2016, to order with the please rise of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of the Common Council, if you will just announce your presence, starting with Mr. Bonaparte.
We're Bonaparte, Councilman.
Shalma Jha, Councilwoman District A.
Elvira Melendez, Councilwoman District D.
Mike DePalma, Councilwoman District D.
Tom Livingston, Councilman District E.
Dick Sashmally, Councilman at large.
John L. Mary, Councilman District D.
Bruce Kimmel, Councilman at large and Council President.
Shannon O'Toole, Jan Derco, District D.
John Coates, Councilman District C.
Doug Hepstead, Large Councilman.
Bae Bowman.
Bae Bowman, Councilwoman District B.
Steve Charasis, Councilman District A.
And make note Travis Sims, Councilman District A, also District B just came in. So it looks like we have 14 council people present. And the Board of Ed members, starting with Dr. Prebker.
Eva Prebker, Board of Ed.
Shirley Mosby, Board of Ed.
Artie Kasimis, Board of Education.
Sherrell Harris, Board of Education.
Heidi Keyes, Board of Education.
Mike Lyons, same.
Mike Barvis, Board of Ed, District D.
So it looks like we have seven.
Brian Meeks, District D.
Eight members of the Board of Education here. We have four on both bodies. Before we get started, I would just like to thank the Common Council and the Board of Ed. A few years ago, we started this, or they started this collaboration, and I believe that it's opened up a transparent and very effective process where we sit and we talk about the budget, we come to some agreements and understandings, and the openness that has occurred, I think, has been very healthy and very, building the trust between the two bodies and building the trust of the community. So I want to thank the Board of Education members, certainly the Common Council members, for that as well. And if you'll note, Councilman Corcello just came in as well. As we get started, I would just like to say that we've had several meetings regarding the proposed budget for the Board of Education. Dr. Adamowski has met with his staff, I've met with my staff, as well as having meetings with members of the Board of Education, Mr. Meeks, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Kimmel, me, Bob Behren, Mr. Hamilton. And we have all understood the need for the budget that's being proposed, and we all fully support the programs that are contained in the budget, and we wish to have that discussion and make sure we can move this budget forward and work closely with the Board of Education and the Norwalk Public School System to make sure that we do have the best school system in the state of Connecticut. We also understand that we have an obligation to work through this as creatively as possible and working towards the end product that is really the bottom line, and the most important thing is the end product, while being sensitive to the taxpayers of the city of Norwalk and making sure they're taking into consideration their needs as well. So I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank the members of the public for coming out who have an interest and show an interest in this process. And now I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity to present you our fiscal '16-'17 operating budget request. As you are probably aware, we've had a ton of change in the management team this past year, change for the better. Dr. Adamowski has been steadily improving on the good works of former super Manny Rivera, replacing several key departures in the central office, consolidating some others, and hiring four new principals at Columbus, Ponus, Tracy, and Wolfville. Most importantly, he has helped us fine-tune our vision for making our schools excellent, and he has laid out a strategy for achieving that vision, which was endorsed by the Board in our retreat in November. Achieving that vision starts with this budget. This budget request is the result of several months of hard work of many talented individuals coming up to speed in a short amount of time, starting in finance committee, then in budget workshops, and ultimately unanimous board approval. As we disclosed last month, it does not have a cheap price tag. Our goal for you tonight is to walk away from here with an understanding of the importance of this request, to earn your support for it and what we are trying to achieve, that is excellence in the Norwalk Public Schools, helping to build a city where people want to work and live, in part because of those schools. As this process unfolds over the next few weeks and months, I want to assure you that we are continuing our hard work to look for areas of efficiency and savings. That effort does not end with this budget request. I want to thank the mayor, Council President Kimmel, and Bob Behren's team for their collaborative efforts in this process. This board and our staff greatly appreciates the cooperation we've had over the past few months in formulating this request before you tonight. Again, thanks for this opportunity to present to the entire council. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Adamowski and his team. Please, if you will, hold your questions for the end of the presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and if I could just say one thing I forgot to mention, anybody that wishes to speak, if you could pull the microphone towards you, I was advised that unless you do, it won't be picked up, so if you can keep that in mind.
Thanks, Mr. Meeks. Good evening, Board members and council members. It's great to have you in one place and be able to talk to you about our schools. You know, the budget, while it's extremely important to our city, to taxpayers, to funding school services, it should not live a life of its own. It only gains importance as a one-year implementation vehicle for a long-term plan. And so I'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about our vision for Norwalk schools, some of our major goals. Tom Hamilton will review some of the structural aspects of the budget with you, and my colleague, Dr. Michael Connor, will talk about some of the reform measures that this budget begins to enable for us and directly related to our strategic operating plan. So I'm not sure who can see the screen, but you have in front of you the same slide, so I would encourage you to just refer to the package in front of you. John Cotter, when he wrote his seminal book, Need Change, said there were eight essential steps in the change process, and of those, vision was the most important, because everything else flows from it or should flow from it. You'll see on your first slide there, the vision which the Board of Education has developed for our school system. And it says, you know, Norwalk is the most successful city school system in Connecticut. Well, what does that mean? That means that students as a whole exceed state average achievement. In other words, the average achievement of Norwalk students is as good or higher than the achievement level of students in the state of Connecticut as a whole, and that our students with the high needs have the smallest achievement yet. These are English language learners, special education students, low-income students who qualify for free lunch in our school system. Now, this is a statement of a vision. We have an external achievement gap with the state as we sit here today, and we also have an even larger internal achievement gap among certain groups of students in our school system. But our plan and what we are oriented toward doing is not to maintain the status quo or to intensify it, but rather to redesign the system in a way that it can be more effective in closing the gap for Norwalk children, providing them with a higher level of education. Our vision for this is embodied by the phrase, raising the bar, closing the gap, because when we close the external achievement gap with the state, we do that through a series of activities that raise the bar for our students, that provide them with greater rigor, relevance, relationships, that just raise the ante on the level of education overall. And when we attempt to close the gap, we focus on the differences among students, and it's a more targeted intervention, or targeted set of interventions and supports to provide students with the same level playing field in our schools. Our vision statement goes on to say that student needs and interests are met through a wide variety of school and program choices that promote diversity and broadened achievement. Diversity is one of our greatest strengths in Norwalk. Our parents want greater choices of programs, of school themes, of pathways to the standards in high school graduation, and through our strategic operating plan, we will be providing more of those and enabling some of the current choices that we offer parents to be more robust, so that they are, in fact, more meaningful and provide a different venue to meet the standards. Finally, our vision statement anticipates that all students are taught by exemplary educators, this is the teacher quality issue, in nurturing, safe, and attractive schools. This hits squarely our facilities master plan and our need for new schools, renovated schools over the next 10 years, as well as schools that have an excellent climate that address the social-emotional needs of students. Students read on grade level by the end of grade three. They leave grade eight equipped to do rigorous high school work. They graduate from high school, college, and career-ready. This means we will not be, or no longer be, a system of social promotion, and that we will work on interventions and supports so that students can pass these milestones in a way that enable them to be successful in the next phase of their education. So that is our vision. It's a measurable vision. If you saw the original version of this, it was underlined and footnoted, because almost every phrase or word in this vision statement has a measure that measures whether or not it's being accomplished. So as we get underway with this, we will be able to tell you, the public, and anyone where we are on achieving this vision. This next slide is entitled, "Theory of Action." Several of our board members asked me to share this with you, because it occupied a significant and milder discussion in our retreat in November. And a theory of action is a general strategy. It's kind of your, you know, business proposition, right, value proposition, if we were a profit-making business. And you see on one side of that is the incremental improvement of theory of action. So that's been our mantra in education for a long time. Basically says that if we spend a little more money each year, if we tinker by having more effective management, you know, we'll pay more, we'll have more programs, and we'll do better. And that has largely been the case for most of the districts in our state, which are small suburban districts. But it doesn't work for cities, because if everybody does that, everybody will make small incremental improvements, but the gap will never close. The gap will remain the same. We need a theory of action that is oriented toward fundamental change, and we've selected the Managed Performance Empowerment Theory of Action for that. Now, we could spend a whole night or a whole graduate seminar on the Managed Performance Empowerment Theory of Action, but in a nutshell, it prescribes that as a district, we will define our relationship with each school on the basis of performance. So we will give greater autonomy for self-governance to those schools that are doing well or are improving rapidly, and we will use our unlimited resources of our district office to intervene and support those schools that are well-performing and not growing appropriately. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that there are a set of implications from any theory of action, just happens to be some of the implications of the Managed Performance Empowerment Theory of Action, and included in that are budget implications, which require that we move from our current formula-based funding to student-based funding. In other words, having the same amount of money behind every child, regardless of what school a parent chooses to send them to within our portfolio of schools. And this is an equity issue as well. We have no throwaway children. We need to be valuing our children equally, spending the same amount of money on them, and again, enabling their parents to have some choice in terms of what school or program is best for them. This comes part and parcel with greater school governance for those schools that aren't doing well, and you'll see that that is included here, a policy our board is currently working on to strengthen our school governance councils. So when you hear the term student-based budget tonight, this is why, because it's an integral part of our theory of action, which directly relates to our vision for the school system. And then finally, we have a set of strategic goals. These are the big goals. Now, if we were having a briefing for you on our strategic operating plan, each of these has about 12 strategies that support them. Each strategy has several implementation steps, so you'd have about 300 things that we're going to do over the next three years to achieve these goals. But for our purposes tonight, these are the goals. And I mentioned to you the need to close the external gap of student achievement, between Norwalk student achievement and state average student achievement, and we think we can do that in approximately three to five years, depending upon the area. We are closer to the state average attainment in reading than we are in math. Math is where our largest external gap currently exists, and a number of our strategies are oriented around providing our students with more time in math, veteran instruction, tier two and tier three interventions and supports, and so on. And our second goal deals with the other aspect of the gap, the internal achievement gap in Norwalk between our high-need students, special education, English language learners, and low-income students relative to the same high-need students in the state. And our goal is to have the smallest achievement gap of any city in the state of Connecticut. Third goal relates to the robust choices that I mentioned in our vision statement. This is the question of new school development, right, and it comes at the same time when our school district is at 100% capacity and needs to build new schools. And so it's an exciting issue, and it's an exciting problem to solve, because we're in the unique position to provide new schools that will meet the needs of a growing population in a growing vibrant city, and at the same time, make programmatic adjustments that make those schools even more exciting than what we may have had in the past. Next one deals with leadership and our staff. Jim Collins, when he wrote his book, Good to Great, he tracked organizations that did the best over a period of several decades, and one of the distinguishing characteristics of those that stayed in business or did exceptionally well was that they developed their leaders from within. They were always not searching for someone they didn't have, but they developed their leaders from within, and our school district needs to do a far better job in that area so that we can have a seamless transition of leadership. Because at the end of the day, we are all transitional, and what matters more is to have a plan that improves student achievement, that we can all contribute to and add value to during the time we are privileged to serve, whether it's elected or appointed office. The fourth, fifth goal deals specifically with our facilities plan, our 10-year facilities master plan. I mentioned to you, we are at 100% capacity. The state average is 76% capacity. The optimum is 90% capacity. So we're on the verge of over enrollment, and due to the mayor's good efforts, we have some alternatives now that will relieve pressure next year. But over the course of 10-year plan, our enrollment projections are up to the extent that we will need the equivalent of two 400-student schools, more schools than we currently have today. And at the end of the plan, we will need another equivalent of a 400-student school to retire the portables, which we have approximately 400 students in today. That's kind of the rough outline of it. Within that, there are all kinds of choices and options and considerations that our Board of Education is dealing with. And then finally, we will not be able to do this on our own. The extent of this work is such that we will have to have partners that help us. We have one of the greatest assets in the state of Connecticut in the form of Norwalk Acts, which is a coalition of 60 organizations devoted to supporting our school system in such an undertaking as our strategic operating plan. There's no other district in Connecticut that has that asset, and so we will need to lean heavily on our partners, both in the civic sector and the private sector and in government, and you, of course, are a major partner in government. And we lean on you whenever we present a proposal like the one being presented tonight. I'm going to ask Tom Hamilton to review with you some of the structure of the budget, and then again, Michael Connor will talk a little bit about what the budget enables us to do or begin doing in the next school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adamowski. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm going to start out by talking briefly about student-based budgeting. Superintendent mentioned that the Managed Performance Empowerment Theory of Action, one of the directions we would move under that theory of action is to move away from a formula-based budget to a student-based budget, where the money is, follows the child depending on which school they're in. So the advantages of a student-based budget are laid out on this slide here. One, it's student-focused. It provides resources based on students, not based on building locations, not based on programs that may historically have been developed in one location or another, but rather, it determines the amount of funding by location based on the number of students that are being educated at each school. It creates equity in funding on the schools. Through no fault of anyone, over time, in a formula-based allocation budget, you're going to have inequities that would develop over time in funding from one school compared to another. So a student-based budget provides a level playing field, if you will, for all of the schools and all the students by creating that equity. It also provides, it's differentiated in that it allocates resources based on student needs, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, and the phased approach we will be taking to implement that differentiated approach. And finally, it's empowering. It provides the schools, school leaders and school governance councils with real decision-making power over how resources will be used in their schools. So it empowers those leaders to really run their operations and to make significant In terms of the process that we're going through, at this point, we are implementing student-based budgeting on a multi-year implementation schedule. For the first fiscal year, for '16-'17, we have developed the base weight per student, and there's a different weight depending on grade level, elementary level, middle school level, or high school level. So we've developed, in essence, the cost of education for core educational services at all of our schools. Then in subsequent years, we will be making student-need-based adjustments, and those need-based adjustments are taken into account, English language learners, they take into account special education students, and the additional costs associated with educating those students. So for the time being, for fiscal year '16-'17, we're going to retain in the central office budget, outside of the student-based budget, those costs associated with special education and ELL services, but for the first year, we will be allocating the core instructional services out to each of the schools. So the development of this budget really is a two-stage process that we're going through. So the first stage we're at now, the Board of Education has approved a budget and turned it over to the city for the city's consideration. That budget defines the overall level of resources that the district is requesting next year. It delineates the portion of the budget that will be controlled centrally by the central office and the portion that will be controlled by the individual schools, and it sets a preliminary per-student allocation, which I'll share with you in a moment. At this point, we have now, are in the process of sending materials out to our schools, and our schools are developing their individual budgets based on their needs, their priorities, and what they think is best for their individual school. So the allocation that you see here on this slide basically demonstrates, shows that the per-student allocation for the high school, and again, this excludes ELL and special education and other central office expenses, including fringe benefits and central office staff and so forth. So it comes out to a little over $6,700 for each high school student, which then translates into 22, roughly $22.5 million that will be allocated to the city's three high schools. The middle schools, a slightly higher per-student allocation at $6,713, and allocating $16.8 million to the four middle schools. And then the elementary schools, a little bit lower at $5,292, allocating $29.3 million. So in total, the percentage of the budget that's allocated on the basis of student allocation is 39%. And when we add in those portions of the budget that are still retained by the central office, but that which we budget for on a site basis as well, the total amount of money, if you will, at the schools rises up to 58%. This number does not include health insurance benefits, which we have not yet rolled out. At some point, probably in the following year, we will look to roll employee benefit costs out with the employees. If we were to roll the employee benefit costs out now, that total portion of the budget that is site-based would be up a bit over 70%. So the major drivers in next year's budget are surprisingly actually rather few, and they're listed here in descending dollar order. So we can really put down on one page and a handful of items, the 95% of the total increase in the Board of Education requested budget. The first and largest item is related to special education, and specifically out-of-district tuition and other professional services for special education. Out-of-district tuition, as you know, we have a number of students that through a PPT process that is mandated by federal law, certain students are determined that they need to be placed outside the district in order to obtain an appropriate be placed outside the district in order to obtain an appropriate education. And we are experiencing a fairly significant increase in the number of students who have been placed out of district. And as a result, next year's budget incorporates about a $1.8 million increase in out-of-district tuition expense. And that recommended budget for next year is, in fact, as much as we are expecting to spend or forecasting to spend in the current fiscal year based on the number of students who are being outplaced right now. So, we're not actually projecting an increase in the number of students being outplaced in the '16, '17 budget. We're simply bringing our projected number for next fiscal year up to the actual number that we're experiencing in the current fiscal year. So, that's a very significant piece of this expense. The other significant piece of special education expense is professional services, and these are for students who are still in district, but for whom, again, through a PPT process, federally mandated special education process, these students have been determined to need additional support services. And typically, these support services may be things like ABA aides, Applied Behavioral Analysts Aides, who will work with children individually or in small groups. It would also include other kinds of professional services, speech and language hearing services, the whole gamut of special education services that were required to provide these supplemental services to these students. Again, the budget for next year is not predicated on an assumption that the actual expenditure for next year is going to exceed the current year number. In fact, just the opposite. The budget for next year assumes that we are going to bring our current projected expenditure that we're going to spend this year down by approximately a million dollars between this year and next year. And we think there are some ways for us to affect those expenses and to do that, but it is an aggressive target that we've set for ourselves to try to bring those costs The next item on the list is labor contract settlements. I think you're all familiar with collective bargaining in the state of Connecticut. Virtually all of our employees on the Board of Education are represented by collective bargaining groups. The largest group, of course, is teachers because they represent, you know, roughly 900 employees for the board. The teachers' contract was settled at a very favorable rate. The total cost of the settlement, including steps, was just under 3%. It's a 2.97% increase. Most of that increase, in fact, was steps. All but the general wage increase on the teachers' contract for next year was limited to 0.2%. But the steps are a fairly significant driver for the Board of Education labor contracts. And so, we have labor contracts, obviously, with teachers' bargaining group, as well as all of our other bargaining groups as well. So, we've built the labor contract cost settlements in, and that represents roughly $2.9 million. The next item is one that the superintendent referred to earlier, and Dr. Connor will also be talking a little bit about this issue as well. But we determined, discovered, if you will, that the district has been paying for a number of what would probably be accurately termed as core educational services out of the Priority School District Grant and also the Alliance District Grant. And those grants were really established by the state to provide additional resources to districts like Norwalk that need additional resources to provide additional supports to students, to provide those Tier Two and Tier Three interventions that the superintendent referred to, to help the district and help those students close that achievement gap. So, what this budget provides is that the, there was roughly $900,000, $900 and somewhat thousand dollars in the Priority School District Grant, funding 20% of our K through three elementary teachers from that grant. And we are moving half of those costs back to the local budget in '16, '17. Frankly, we initially wanted to move the entire cost back to the local budget in '16, '17, but found that we just couldn't make the numbers work. So, we proposed to, in essence, do this over a two-year period rather than a one-year period. But we think it's important to return those core teaching staff back to the local budget. The next item is student transportation. And this is also driven primarily by special education and an increase in the special education caseload because there are transportation expenses that go along with outplaced students. And so, since we are seeing an increase in the number of outplaced students, we're seeing an increase in the corresponding transportation costs associated with those students. The next item, similar to the elementary teachers, we determined that the Norwalk Pathways Academy at Briggs, that the entire teaching staff and principal for that school were being funded, again, from state grants that were intended to provide supplemental intervention and supplemental learning to students who need that. So, we have proposed to return those operations back to the local budget, and in doing so, we reduced them by more than a third, close to 50% actually. The total amount that was in the Priority School District Grant for the Norwalk Pathways Academy was in excess of $600,000. So, we are making a number of reductions in that area, trying to right-size that operation and then bringing that core staff back to the local budget. There is an increase in electricity. We do have an additional building that we will be picking up in the Norwalk Early Childhood Center. And there was also a need to make an adjustment to reflect actual usage for electricity at the Board of Education. So, we're essentially just returning that to an amount consistent with last year's actual spend on electricity. The next three numbers are budget reductions that we've incorporated into the recommended, into the requested budget. The first one, $745,000, is related to the middle school and a redesign of the teaching model at the middle school. One of the things we discovered in going through the student-based budget process of putting together the student-based budget was that unlike most districts where we, where you would normally expect to spend the least amount of money at the elementary level, the middle, at the middle school level, and the most at the high school level, because the high schools have the most comprehensive program with more electives and so on and so forth, we found that we had a somewhat unusual situation here in that we were spending more at the middle school level than at the high school level. And so, in light of that, and in light of a interest in considering redesigns to the model that we use there, the superintendent has assigned Dr. Connor to develop a middle school redesign that will generate savings of $745,000. So, we've built that into the budget. That equates to roughly, you know, a bit less than $200,000 per middle school that we would be looking to reduce in those four middle schools. The next item is health insurance savings. And I know that the Finance Committee is aware, and perhaps others of you are aware, that the city and the Board of Education operate a joint internal service fund to account for all risk in the city and the Board of Education, including risks associated with health insurance. And we are faced with a, certainly a welcome problem, if you want to call it that, in that the Internal Service Fund is designed to operate with assets equal to liabilities. But the most recent audit for the fiscal year that ended June of 2015 indicates that the insurance fund has assets that are $18 million higher than their liabilities. And of that $18 million, about $14 million of it was a result of contributions made over the past three years by the Board of Education to the insurance fund, which exceeded the disbursements. So, the insurance fund grew significantly. And it's a bit ironic for those of you who were here a number of years ago, because a number of years ago, we were facing the exact opposite situation where we had a deficit in the Internal Service Fund that was a result of the Board of Education under-budgeting its contributions to the insurance fund. Well, we now have a situation where the actual results of operation were much better than expected in the Board of Education's health insurance. And I'll talk a little bit about that because I think it's significant and it's important. The Board of Education has made a very significant move, is really well ahead of the curve in terms of adopting and implementing a high-deductible health plan attached with a HSA account. So, the Board of Education, I really have to give great, you know, kudos to the folks who were responsible for negotiating those changes in those collective bargaining agreements because the results have been really, nothing short of spectacular. Last year, the health insurance consultants had estimated that costs for the Board of Education was for fiscal year '14, '15, or medical trend generally was going up at 8% per year. The Board of Education's actual experience from last fiscal year was that their costs went down by 3.6% during fiscal year '14, '15. So, it's really results like that that produced this $14 million surplus in the insurance fund. And so, we have built in a drawdown of that $14 million into next year's budget based on some very preliminary discussions that I had had with Bob Barron. And so, we had built the number that Bob and I had originally come up with. We don't want to suggest that we should draw it all down in one year. You could draw down $14 million in one year, and everyone would look like a hero for that one year, but you'd be essentially jumping off the cliff because the following year, that $14 million wouldn't be there. But it certainly is appropriate to draw those funds down in a measured sort of way, in a controlled, planned sort of way. And that's what Bob and I had originally come up with. This is an area that we continue to have discussion with the city on, and we will continue to have further discussion as we proceed through the budget approval process. We will be getting formal updated projections from our health insurance consultant fairly soon, and we would certainly want to take those updated projections into account. And so, we will be looking, you know, continue to look at this area, but certainly, at this point, favorable that we're able to recognize a $500,000 reduction in our health insurance account year over year based on where we're at. Lastly, we have $293,000 of savings built into this budget as a result of consolidating some pre-K classrooms. So, even though we have some additional electricity expenses that are referred to, we also have some savings in the budget from consolidating classrooms, the pre-K classrooms at the Roosevelt Okay, a high-level review of the budget. This is Slide 11. Again, this really just sort of highlights what I just went over. Salaries, you see, going up by, in total, all salary accounts going up by 2.6 million or 2.4%. The Board of Education is a people-based business. Obviously, it takes a lot of people to staff classrooms and to educate 11,500 children a year. And so, most of our expense, of course, is tied up in salary and benefits. Professional services, the increase that you see in professional services is primarily attributable, again, to special education. Professional services that I talked about. Other services, the $2,359, the increase there is driven primarily by the increase in out-of-district tuition as well as transportation. Supplies and materials, the increase there is a reflection of some of the new initiatives that Dr. Connor will be speaking to you about momentarily, as well as reflecting just general trend and inflationary adjustments in certain supply accounts. And that pretty much sums up the total budget, which, of course, is, requested budget is going up by 3.9%. Graphically, I think the most important takeaway from this graph is just how big a slice of the pie. The blue is salaries, and the red is employee benefits. So, between the two, you know, we're up over roughly, what, 80% of the budget roughly is made up of salary and benefits. Okay, cost-saving initiatives. I think I touched on the high-deductible health plan already, but in addition to that, the district has also negotiated increases in employee premium cost shares. And so, the employee premium cost shares in the Board of Ed's labor contracts are consistent with and very similar to the cost shares that the city has negotiated with its collective bargaining groups. The Board of Education, interestingly, has a pretty limited set of retiree health benefits. And that has historically been the case, but there's also been improvements made in this area as well. So, that's an area, although there are some retiree health benefits that are provided by the district, they are not as generous as you typically find in many public sector Next, the Board of Ed has also aggressively moved to contract out custodial services. We have six schools that are now contracted out for custodial services. And that is an initiative and an effort that we intend to continue to pursue as opportunities arise to do so. We do have a labor contract that requires that there be no actual layoffs as a result of any contracting services. So, we have to monitor our retirements in that area, and then when the opportunity presents itself to consider contracting out, that's something we would certainly consider. We've gone the other direction with some of our ABA services. We have contracted, or we've brought in-house 15 ABAs that are, have been brought on staff in the last six months to replace contracted services. We're saving about $27 an hour on our in-house ABAs compared to the contracted ABAs. So, that's another, again, efficiency effort of the district. The district has reduced headcount over the years. One of the striking bits of information from our health insurance consultant was the number of employees that were on the district's health plan in 2012. Let me have these numbers here, I'm sorry. Just give me a moment. Was 1,605 employees July 2012, were projected to be at 1,469 employees as of July 2016. So, there's been a pretty sizable reduction in the overall workforce over the past four or five years. And so, that also is, has helped to hold down our health insurance costs as well as obviously hold down overall personnel costs. We have rebid a number of services, and we are actively looking for additional services and commodities to rebid recently. We've rebid transportation last year. We're gearing to rebid food services this year. We've recently rebid certain energy services, including natural gas, and cooperate, coordinate with the city in terms of achieving greater bargaining power or higher quantities discounts by combining with the city on energy procurement. The superintendent, I think, is going to talk briefly about special education and the comprehensive improvement plan based on the correct audit. In fact, I think we included a several-page summary of the superintendent's improvement plan. But the point here is that although we do expect and there will be a short-term, one-time cost spread out over several years associated with the improvement plan in special education, long-term, we know that it will help reduce our costs, it will help reduce out-of-district tuition, and will help reduce those outside professional services expenses. And finally, multi-year financial planning. I just wanted to mention that because the district started that a number of years ago, and we continue to prepare multi-year financial plans. In fact, I have a slide on that in a moment. And we think that's an important effort as well to help us, guide us as to where the budget is going to be going in the coming years and gives us an opportunity to plan for budget changes. Next slide, I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Connor, who's going to talk about the major reform initiatives that are built into this budget primarily through the the major reform initiatives that are built into this budget primarily through the movement of those items, the elementary teachers and the pathway academies at Briggs that are moving from grant-funded into the local budget under this budget request.
Before Dr. Connor starts, I just want to bring to the council's attention that we are one, Norwalk is one of thirty of the hundred and sixty-seven districts in the state that are an alliance district, which means we receive a significant amount of supplemental funding from the state of Connecticut that is limited to the thirty districts in the state who have the greatest need. So this is a great asset. However, historically, this grant is about four years old now. Historically, this grant has been used to supplant areas of the local budget, and so we end up with middle school language arts teachers in this grant, or the whole staff of a high school in this grant, in the case of Briggs, or, you know, fifty, a portion of the salaries of fifty regular elementary teachers in grades one, two, and three. So we have, as time has indicated, we have about half of that removed in this budget. We had hoped it would be a one-year process so that we would have resources available to close the gap and provide supports for our students. That's not going to be possible at three point nine. Our budget submission would be about five percent if we did that. So we have to accomplish it over a two-year period. So ironically, when Dr. Connor talks about these reform initiatives, these are reform initiatives that are made possible not by investment in our local budget, but by putting appropriate, moving appropriate expenditures from grants to our local budget so our grants can be used for their intended purpose. And that's kind of the structural adjustment in this budget that enables us to start on the road of implementing the strategies of our strategic operating.
Good evening, everybody, and just to reiterate what Dr. Adamowski said, our grants are going to be used to support these large-scale and structural initiatives that currently that we've started in the year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and also moving towards the two thousand sixteen, seventeen academic year. One of the key strategies within our strategic operating plan and also that we're going to use to support our structural initiatives is our comprehensive assessment plan, which will be able to give us norm reference information in the context of how we're doing externally, nationally, and statewide, criterion-referenced information, which how we're doing in accordance to the Common Core State Standards, and more importantly, providing us information on what we need to change or adjust or modify within the classroom for instructional purposes. Also, too, we have strong core programs that are in place at the elementary, middle, and high school level. However, what we need to do is align those programs with a strong standards-based curriculum, and that's going to be aligned to the Common Core State Standards, also that with the new adoption in December with the NGSS, it's the Next Generation Science Standards. So more importantly, that our teachers aren't just focusing on the program pragmatics that we're implementing, but also understanding the instructional pedagogy that's aligned to the Common Core State Standards, as well as national adopted standards within science. Our structural supports, we need to be able to strengthen at the middle and high school level. There are strong research-based and scientifically-based programs that are, that we're going to be adopting. We have adopted in an ad hoc manner this year at a few middle schools as well as both high schools, but we're going to have a large-scale implementation with Read one eighty as well as Math one eighty. This goes back to the outset of Dr. Adamowski's presentation in regards to tier-two supports, so to ensure that we have those structural supports for our students that most need it as well. Also, I'm proud of that we are scaling up the implementation of the CK three LI initiative, and that's the Connecticut kindergarten through three, kindergarten through grade three literacy initiative, and that's where we're going to get state support from the State Department of Education, as well as our partners from Literacy Howe, as well as Hill from the Literacy, and that's going to be able to enable us to be able to have a true turnkey model where we're going to be able to train our CISDs, and that's our Curriculum Instructional Site Directors, in order to strengthen tier-one instruction, but more importantly, be able to provide the professional capacity as well as capital for tier-two supports. Our interventionists, right now, we have a hundred and seventy-eight pair of professionals that are trained where we're converting them into tiered interventionists, and then our second cohort, which for our CK three LI initiative, that's five schools currently. Next year, they'll be adopting one interventionist at the school, so they'll be able to provide those tiered interventions, but more importantly, and this goes back to the start of my presentation, is look at that leverage assessment data to be able to identify the instructional support that's needed for all of our students. Lexia Core Five and Systems forty-four, it can be used as a tier-two intervention, but research has specifically stated that it's stronger for our tier-three supports, so it's more in the lines of those foundational skills that are grounded within the standards.
Excuse me, could you explain what Lexia Core Five and Systems forty-four?
Absolutely. So Lexia Core Five is going to be utilized in our K-five classrooms. Those are the students that are really substantially deficient in core areas, whether it be phonics, whether it be fluency. So it's going to be discrete instructional skill instruction that's really going to be focused and targeted to their individual need. So those are the students that can't really access the tier-two. Same thing with Systems forty-four. Those are those students that cannot access Read one eighty, so they really need the discrete instruction, skill-based instruction in order for them to access that tier-two. So it's, right now, we have an upside-down triangle, as I call it, is that our most supports that we need is in that tier-three level. We don't want that. We want our students to fall in that tier-one domain. And then our secondary school improvement, which is our middle school redesign, we will be supporting middle schools in the context of how we can increase time, structural supports, i.e. the Read one eighty, Math one eighty, as well as the Lexia and the Systems forty-four, and also, more importantly, how can we create conditions to be able to support our students that's grounded using Bill Daggett's, Dr. Bill Daggett's, research on rigor, relevance, and relationship. And then we are creating high school learning academies. Right now, the Norwalk High School is, has a NECA program, and then next year, we're also looking at expanding that academy base to communications as well as the digital media, and then for Norwalk High School, an IB academy as well as a health and, health and medical academy as well.
That's Brian McMahon.
Brian McMahon, I'm sorry.
I just, I might want to add to this, that our greatest area of concern at this time is the middle school. So we've talked to you about the fact that we have a internal achievement gap and an external achievement gap, the external smaller than the internal. But one of the things that is reinforcing our internal achievement gap is the performance of our middle schools. And, you know, Mr. Hamilton mentioned to you that our great surprise in finding that we were spending more money at the middle schools and really having the least effective model of our three levels. Currently in our school system, our data shows that students make a lot of good gains K through five, and then that gain drops between five and six, and then levels off basically flat during the middle school years. We have to do better than that. So we are looking at a design that is more programmatically better for students and also more cost-effective, and we think that both can be achieved through the middle school redesign process.
If you don't mind, you brought this up twice. Could you explain how we were spending more on our middle schools than the formula that was being used on our high schools? I can't imagine how that could happen.
Well, it has. Part of it, we think, is the fact that we are in a horizontal team structure in all the middle schools, which means these are grade-level teams, and our middle school teachers teach one less period as a result of that than our high school and elementary teachers. So they have a personal planning period, but then they have this team period, or team planning, and some of that gets done, but, you know, again, it hasn't been a robust process. So there is less teaching per teacher at the middle school level. And then, you know, we have other design issues as well in terms of how time is used. And I think as Dr. Connor has looked at the middle schools, we see a lot of wasted time, and we see the need to restructure time. Again, you know, we should be able, as a school district, to offer a good middle school program from somewhere between the cost of our current elementary program and our current high school program, and that's really the challenge. So we're inefficient, we're not data-based, we're not using time as well as we could. That is not to say that there are not wonderful things happening in each one of our middle schools, but it's where the gap is most resistive to education in our school system because of the dip that takes place between fifth and sixth grade, and that doesn't quite recover during the seventh and eighth grade years.
Okay, I'm going to finish up. The next slide is a one-page slide on our three-year financial projection, which we have just recently updated again to reflect some new information specifically on the salaries, although we know more or less what the wage increases are likely to be. I don't know if we can adjust that. The fact of the matter is, we are seeing an increase in enrollment, and we think that we need to build into the three-year plan the expectation that there may be or will be a need to increase teacher staffing to address that enrollment in future years. So we did build in a small amount to account for an increase in enrollment. We also have the benefit line because of the fact that we're drawing down the insurance fund, but we expect we would draw that down in smaller and smaller increments over this three-year period. We have some impact on the three-year financial plan as a result of that. We have not anticipated large increases in this projection in special education costs above what we have already built into the sixteen, seventeen budget. So this does, in many ways, really assumes that we are going to be able to move forward with the, sort of the comprehensive improvement plant, plan related to special education. And as a result, basically, what you see is we are expecting our increase in seventeen, eighteen to be similar to this year's increase and then start to trend down after that in the out-years, but still be above three percent in each of the three years. So in conclusion, the proposed budget is aligned with the board's strategic goals, the goals that the superintendent reviewed with you earlier. It implements the student-based budgeting reform. It funds critical student assessment and intervention strategies and staff professional development from grants. It frees up room in the alliance grant in the priority school district grant for those intended purposes and to fund those student assessment and intervention strategies. It meets the baseline special education expense contingent upon investments in proposed, a proposed three-year special education development fund. And again, the superintendent, I think, is going to touch briefly on that. That's not part of this proposed budget, but we have had discussions with the Board of Education and discussions with the mayor and council president over that, and so we do think it's important to engage and continue that discussion. And finally, the requested budget represents what we believe is a reasonable three point nine percent overall increase. And I'm going to ask if Mr. Make has any final concluding comments.
Yeah, sure, first. Thanks, Dr. Connor, Dr. Adamowski. This is a culmination of a lot of work. Thanks for keeping it to about an hour. There's a lot of information underneath here. You know, I would like to point out, as we look at this, we look at the increased costs in special education, double forecasting, if you look backwards, these costs have grown since like fifty percent over the last four years. This is our best effort to curb these costs and start getting that to trend down. If we don't spend this money today, perhaps we're looking at a fifty percent increase from here four years from now. So I really want you to think of that significant line item there as an investment to help keep these costs down in the future. So again, thanks. Thanks to the staff, thanks to the council for listening. Mr. Mayor will open it up for discussion and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Oh, yeah, one, just for everybody, in the red folder here, we included the budget summary documents. Remember that, of course, you've got a whole detailed superintendent's budget. We found in the last couple of years that these simplified budget summaries are very helpful, both to us on the board and the common council, Board of Estimate, to give you a high-level overview of what the budget's doing, so you may want to take a look at those as you review these things to get that high-level view. And also in the packet is the explanation of the special education development fund. This is the special three point six million dollar request, and it explains first the eleven different aspects of the improvement plan that would be funded with that budget, and also shows the first year of that three-year program, how we would allocate that funding to try to get the special problems on the road to be corrected.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We'll open it up to questions from the council members. I imagine there's not too many questions from the Board of Ed. There may be, but we'll certainly recognize, Mr. Kimmel.
Thank you. You said I have to get close to this for the work?
Yes.
Okay. It's the opposite of the council chamber, sometimes you're too loud, you never know. But anyway, first of all, thank you. To reiterate what Mayor Rowling said a little while ago, a few years ago, we began having these discussions, and that was kind of right after the shortfall in the Board of Ed's insurance fund was discovered, and we had kind of like an angry relationship at the time, adversarial, would probably be a more accurate way to put it. And since then, we've actually, I think we've had more collaboration between the Board of Ed and the council than in any time in the last fifteen or twenty years. And once we've built that level of trust that didn't exist, we could really get things done, because crafting a budget without trust is nearly impossible. You just can't do it. And we started to have these meetings a few years ago, and the Board of Ed began to understand our perspective and how we approach problems, just as we had a better sense of how they were, with the problems they were faced. And I think we ought to continue these meetings, and they are really a good thing for the city, for the population as a whole, for schools, for taxpayers. This built, this collaboration has now reached a point where it's much better than, you know, ever before. It's just got to continue. I want to echo what Mr., what Mayor Rowling said. We are committed to fully funding the request. How we do that will be interesting. We believe we can find the money, at the same time minimize the impact on taxpayers. You heard Mr. Hamilton mention some of the surpluses, and they will be used in a creative and responsible manner. So I think at the end of the day, everybody is going to be happy with not only the Board of Ed budget, but with the city budget as a whole. When you look at the bottom line, what the Board of Ed is getting and what the tax, what the cost will be to taxpayers, so I think we have a win-win situation here. If you don't mind, I sometimes can't resist. I have a few small questions on the budget itself, if you don't mind, okay? I was working from the budget book prior to this meeting, and I did have a couple of questions. On page eight and ten, where you talk about a sixty-one percent increase in professional and technical services, I think it's about four point two million. This is primarily for legal, consult, and rehab services, outside vendors. I thought last year you were moving away from that model where you were going to bring those outside vendors in-house, and I know there was a fairly large request last year for twenty-two of those specialists. I know you weren't able to implement that request, which was granted, which wasn't the budget for a variety of reasons. Are you switching back now to the outside vendor model?
No, this is a very good question. And, you know, in the CREG audit, it was, you know, there were explicit comments over how the lack of supervision in our special education department has inhibited, lack of leadership in supervision, has inhibited our ability to of leadership and supervision, has inhibited our ability to achieve any goals in that area. So, this was a great example. The ABAs, which are very expensive, almost three times the amount when you contract for them, as our ability to employ them as direct employees. They were to be brought in-house, right? So, our special ed administrators don't work during the summer, so nothing happened during the summer in terms of hiring these folks. And then there was attempted at the beginning of the year to hire them. Well, they're all taken. They've been hired by other school districts that are doing appropriate planning. So, I think there were about a dozen hired. The others had to be continued on a contracted basis. We've made adjustments in this budget to have at least two of our special ed district staff available 12 months, as well as two of Dr. Connor's staff, because we have to run curriculum institutes and, you know, do things during the summer for professional development for teachers. So, we can't shut down during the summer and then pull all our best teachers out of classrooms once the children are here to teach. These are the kind of structural leadership and supervision issues that have bollocked the district in the special ed arena in the past, that, you know, we are, you can see that one of our, one of our goals in the special ed plan is to, you know, reorganize the administration of special ed so that it becomes effective. But we are on the same path. We will do this this summer in a manner that the district personnel was supposed to do it a summer ago.
I think the other important point on the, particularly the ABA services, is the desire of the district, the intent of the district to move away from this over-reliance on a one-on-one ABA model to a full continuum of services. And so, you know, that's going to take some time to build that continuum of services, and that's what the development fund is all about. But, you know, that's part of our strategy to help bring down those professional service costs, is to stop relying quite so heavily on the one-on-one model.
Yeah, on page 12, we had some, before the holidays, we were discussing aids, and I was under the impression that there would be a rather substantial cut in aids. But when I look at the proposed expenditures, I know last year, 1415, it was 6.7 million, 15, currently 7.9 million, and you're projecting 7.7 million. That's about a million more than last year. But I'm currently under the impression there is going to be a rather large cut in the number of aids. Something is not jiving.
So, as Tom pointed out, when you lack a service delivery model in the different categories of special education, and when you don't have a continuum, full continuum of professional services, there's a tendency to rely on a one-on-one service delivery model, where virtually every child has their own aid or their own ABA. The problem with changing from that to a better model is you have to be able to offer a continuum of services, or at least some of them gradually, before you can transition students from the services they have. Because these services, whether they're great or not, are required by their individual education plans and carry the force of law. And so, the parent has to agree through the annual review of that plan to go into an approach that is better. And so, we're going to go through this period of the Special Ed Development Fund where we have to build a structure while we decrease another structure. We can't decrease the structure that exists, no matter how imperfect it is, until we have something to offer, which is why we need this transitional funding. So, at the end of three years, we hope to have a different structure in place, which is more cost-effective, most importantly, is better instructionally for the child. And that will enable us, over a three-year period, to eliminate the number of one-on-one paraprofessionals.
What you said makes perfect sense, that much I understand. But you're going, if I remember correctly, a reduction for next year of 42 aids, but it's going to be with an increased cost in the cost of aids, even with the reduction. In fact, a million dollars more than last year, even though we're talking about a decrease of 42. That seems to be just going in opposite directions. That would not, doesn't, doesn't look to me like it's an efficient way to go in terms of aids, if we're spending more, a million dollars more next year than last year with 42 less aids.
The budget, the budget this year is $7,929, going down to $7,769. So, the budget is going down, you know, $150,000 for your budget to next year's budget.
With 42 less aids.
Point two is the aids are not only funded in the local budget, some aids are funded in grant budget as well. So, there may be reductions in aid positions in the grant budget that's separate and apart from the local budget.
So, I'll give you an example of that. First-grade aids, first-grade aids were funded in the Alliance Priority School District budget. And again, we will be transitioning that funding to a system that enables schools to have funding for tier-two and tier-three interventions for those students that need it. So, that's, that was a chunk. And then there are other chunks in different places. You know, at one point, we were employing almost 400 aids. So, you can see how this system has gotten out of control, and needs to be, you know, brought back into, you know, something that relates to a responsible service delivery model and a continuum of services that meets a broad spectrum of needs.
The cost of oil, page 22, same as, I think you're holding it the same, yet there's a comment that four schools removed the natural gas.
Yeah. You're on page 22?
Yes.
The, yeah, that is an account we're going to be able to make a reduction to.
You're darn right, with the cost of oil compared to last year and this year. So, that's good. One last question, it really, you know, the council has a line in the overall city budget legislative, and I think it's about $5,000 bucks, okay? And I know on page 58, Board of Ed budget, it's going from, I'm sure I'm missing something here, from 0 to $427,400. What does that include?
I'm sorry, what?
Page 58, 58, page 58, excuse me.
This is, the proposed budget is segregating expenses that previously were in the superintendent's budget, and they were consolidated all into the superintendent's budget. So, this budget is going to segregate board expenses from superintendent expenses. So, if you look on page 59, you'll see a reduction in that budget of $642,000. So, there was a transfer of expense items from the superintendent's budget to the board budget, which, this is the first time there is a separate board budget. So, the board budget consists really of secretarial services and legal expenses are the biggest item.
Okay. To my colleagues on the council, perhaps we're getting short-changed a little bit. Ours is about $5,000.
Yeah, of course. If your legal department budget isn't paid for out of that.
Oh, I know that. Is the legal department budget paid out, paid out of that? Is that true?
Out of the $5,000 of it?
No, out of the $428.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
The biggest, the biggest item is $338,000 for legal fees. And if you look at the same line item on page 59 for legal fees, you'll see the budget was $350,000 in the current year. We left $12,000 in the superintendent's budget and moved $338 to the Board of Education budget.
We have plenty of lawyers on the council. Maybe we can figure out a way to do it. Thank you very much.
Yeah. The reason for that, councilman, is that the board council, under law, reports to the board, not the superintendent. So, we just tried to align those things where, you know, accountability is just getting everything the way it should be.
Further questions, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you. I just wanted to drill down a little bit on these major budget drivers, just so I understand a little better with these grants. So, it's about $900,000 that you're, well, I guess I don't really understand it. Do those grants still exist and are still outstanding? So, you could, if you wanted to, keep these teachers and the staff as being funded by those grants, if you wanted to?
You could. That's not what those grants were intended for. So, for example, the Alliance Grant was, is legislatively intended for four purposes: reading intervention, math intervention, time, meaning additional time and instruction, and talent, meaning professional development of teachers.
So, that's what you intend to do with the grant? Now, that's one grant. What about the other one?
Correct. So, we have a combination, the Alliance Grant is the Alliance Priority School District Grant, which we were eligible for previously, before we were in Alliance District. Now, it's combined. So, that's our major state grant. The other major grant we have is our Title I grant, but that is applicable only to our six Title I schools. So, for example, the summer schools that we offer this summer, extension of time through summer learning, that would be funded at those six schools through the Title I grants, where if we had enough Alliance funds and weren't using them on other things, we could fund a summer school at the non-Title I schools at the same time using the Alliance Grant.
Okay, thank you. One other question, on the health insurance savings, you've identified $500,000 out of a $14 million surplus, and I wonder how you came up with the number?
The number that we've actually drawn down or proposed to draw down from the health insurance fund, 2.6, $2,318. And that was a number that Bob Barron had arrived at. He and I had some discussions about what would be an appropriate amount to retain in the insurance fund. And in the medical area, we thought that retaining a 10% corridor for adverse claims experience, which would translate into about $2.7 million based on the current claims law and for the Board of Education, that that would be an appropriate amount to permanently say that would be our target of what we're looking to retain. And so, that would indicate that there's about $11.6 million available. And then Bob had suggested drawing that down over a five-year period, so he took 20% of that $11.6 million, and that's how the $2.3 million number was arrived at. And so, when we built our budget recommendation on health insurance, we started with our health insurance consultants recommended budget, and then we subtract from that the amount that we would, that we understand our employees are going to pay based on their collective bargaining agreements for premium cost share. We subtract from that the amounts that may be reversed by somebody who's paying on COBRA or retiree who may be required to pay 100% of the cost. And we make various other adjustments, and then one of the big adjustments we made in our calculation was this, taking the $2,318,000, which is 20% of that insurance balance that we think can be drawn down. And then when you add all those numbers and, you know, add and subtract those numbers, you come up with a number that's $500,000 lower than our current budget. Now, you might say, well, gee, if it's coming down by 2.3 million, how come you're not coming down by closer to 2.3 million? And it's really because of the health insurance consultant's starting point is assuming some increase in claim costs. And that's a number that we are, you know, continuing to refine and will continue to refine in, you know, collaboration with the city. So, you know, that's an area that we continue to look at, but we, you know, that was the, one of the issues that got the district into trouble in the past was, you know, that the health insurance number didn't tie back to the number the consultant recommended. So, you know, that was where we, that was where we started.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hempstead.
Yes, thank you. Couple of things. First of all, you brought up a suggestion, and I was kind of surprised to read in the paper a couple of weeks ago, and the paper kind of, I guess, misled me what was being interpreted as that discussion about building new schools. A, that does not scare me. Actually, I'm supportive of that. It's something we should address back in the 90s, and we didn't. Instead, we wound up with schools with 700 students in it rather than 450, which is the maximum preferred number, and I'm in favor of our kids having a good education, solid education, a solid environment. So, a 450 number of school for elementary school level certainly works in my books. What we have to make sure happens, I'm piggybacking that, is the city's investment is today. We look at it 20 years later, and you're saying, well, why didn't they do that 20 years ago? But I understand the budgetary stress that puts on the city, because our state funding reimbursement program for schools is totally inadequate for a city of $85,000, $86,000, and growing. So, we certainly need to, a combination of, I think, support that program, but then also work with our state to make sure that their funding levels go up, because I know some districts that don't have great schools seem to get 90% of their schools paid for. Some, and the, I'm okay with the additional spending personally, I mean, on the special services side of this equation. One, I think, because I think at this time, they had envisioned that this Roosevelt School would have been completed and actually operating, which it is not. It's about a year behind schedule for a variety of reasons. But getting that centralized, more centralized, and more efficient labor resources put at it, I think is certainly worth putting a primary investment in and moving forward, because I think long-term it's going to pay off for our kids and pay off for your budgets as you move forward. I've got a couple of questions concerning the school governing council. I got about three questions, they're real simple, so I'll fire them all off. When and how was it implemented? And is there somewhere, is there a go-to website or something on your website or whatever that we can find out how they were implemented on the school governing councils? Two, I was perplexed about the transportation cost, and it's not to me a fuel issue, because you probably bought the year before for this, this year and had your contract. But I thought the city a couple of years ago, or maybe less than a couple of years ago, had gone ahead and leased a property that was going to help cut our costs for storing buses. And my understanding is, or has that been done? It's not?
Let me ask Ms. Keys to address your first question. The school governance councils are an idea at this point that the Policy Committee of the Board and Ms. Keys' leadership is considering, if you could.
Yeah, so, thanks. Mr. Hempstead, we actually just had a policy meeting prior to coming in to this meeting tonight. We've had several meetings. We discussed it during our board retreat. It's part of our strategic plan. It's in the discussion stages right now. We're working on it. We had PTOC members, we had principals, we've had parents come to our meeting. So, again, we're really discussing it, but it will be budget-based, and it will be at all of our 19 schools. Right now, we have eight schools approximately that are doing it, but we wanted all 19 schools to be part of it.
Okay. The reason I brought it up, I think there was a reference of voting, voting on the budget in February?
Well, that would be one of the, one of the duties of the school governance councils in a school that had autonomy, which is one of 12 duties, would be to approve the principal's recommended allocation plan or school budget.
And it would consist of a committee, would have a principal?
Yeah, I am familiar. It's a state, it's a, I'm familiar. That's why, I hadn't heard much about it, but I saw it was like they were voting in February, like, okay, how did we go from point A to point B? That's, I thought it was already implemented.
Mr. Hempstead can update you on the bus lot issue.
Yeah, the bus lot issue is still out there. You may recall, actually, from the Finance Committee, the issue was raised about environmental questions, and that has hung this up for six months. I had indicated to the property owner, I guess it was in December, that we were done negotiating, that we were unable to reach an agreement, and we were going to be backing away from it. They have since come back with a new offer that the attorneys have indicated may be enough to make it worthwhile considering. So, the attorneys are in the law department, city law department, and the environmental council that the city law department is using are working. Council that the City Law Department is using are working still with the property owner's attorneys. So it may still yet happen, I'm not certain. You know, I thought it was probably not going to happen, but now, you know, it's, at this point, I think, still uncertain, and it's really being tied up over contractual issues around the issue of liability. But that's not the driver on transportation. The driver on transportation and the budget really is special education. The, about a hundred thousand of the total, it was about a, I don't remember the number now, was it about four hundred thousand, I believe?
Yeah, three, something.
Four hundred and eight thousand. About a hundred thousand of that is a contractual increase. And it's, it's a big contract. It's a multi-year contract. It was put out to bid last year, but there is a modest contractual increase. So we've built in the contractual increase for next year, which is about a hundred thousand of that four hundred thousand. The remaining additional cost is related to special education. And again, it gets back to that issue of out-of-district students are entitled to transportation to the school that they're going to. So if they're going to a school in Meriden or New Jersey or wherever it is they're going to, they're entitled to transportation, and the district pays for that. So we have more students out of district, more transportation costs.
If I can finish, Ms. Mayor? Is that okay? One of the things you brought up always piqued my interest, because sitting on the council side, sitting on the planning committee, sitting when we were going to develop a whole bunch of housing, now that the housing is being developed, we always used to hear, kids don't live in apartments, they're only building studios, not, you know, we're not getting new kids. And I'm not disputing that. As more of, I'd like to see a collaborative effort as you move forward with either any school expansion programs, because you had mentioned that you were anticipating hiring more teachers based on more students, that there's a joint effort to come up with a approach that will give us the best guess and results of what our population is going to look like, and how many more students would we anticipate? I mean, we've got several thousand units coming on, have come on and coming online. So it's better to get a projection. We did a study probably seven, eight years ago, I think before the bust, about, you know, what effects would have a fire department, police department, school system. And the way I understood it, that some of the numbers have wound up being accurate, but now all of a sudden I'm hearing more teachers for more students, so...
So we can give that to you now. We have as part of the Facilities Master Plan Study a whole segment of the report which contains very precise enrollment projections for the next ten years, the life of the plan. The apartments are handled through these, these very sophisticated formulas that reflect price of the unit versus number of bedrooms versus location that end up with the number of students that they will, that they will produce. That is not the driver of enrollment for us right now. It's a contributor, but it's a relatively small contributor. The, the driver is growth in the birth rate in two thousand and five, which has produced a cohort of students that is moving through the school system and increasing enrollments as they move along. And then we've also determined that immigration is a very small factor. The next, largest factor to the birth rate is growth in South Norwalk, which is the largest growing population. Again, this is not immigrant population, this is existing population that is growing. So we can provide that to you. You're a little, a bit of a step ahead of us.
I can just, Mr. Mayor, just to point out that we have arranged for our consultants who did the study to make a full presentation of that, and your planning committee meeting on March three. So we're going to, we're going to come in and give you the entire presentation, consultants.
I can fucking go on for two months.
Thank you. Mr. Hempstead?
All right, that's good. I'm good. Ms. Mayor, thank you very much.
Mr. Setchinelli?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Setchinelli and Mr. Serasis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
And thank you. First, I'd like to say I myself am a product of North Public Schools, and my father is a North Public Teacher for north of thirty years. So I commend you on your efforts on student focus and student budgeting. I'm right in front of the speaker, so hopefully... That said, I do have some questions and queries regarding the disassociation of nomenclature around the grant and being something separate to funding. I think, I think that in my mind is something that I may have some questions around how the grant funding is sort of being, has been utilized. There was no, in terms of, the most important thing is all, the majority of the budgeting has been conducted for a long period of time, four years, so forth. You said that they were able to return, you were looking to return the budgeting. And I do understand for actuarial analysis or line-level accounting to return this to a labor line or to the salary line. But in terms of equal mass displacement, we'll say, if we were to, we were able to under five hundred thousand dollars in the health insurance savings, we're looking to return the grant funding to the proper line over a two-year period, why not a four-year period? Because it would be, at that point, just a wash.
Because we can't afford to wait on our reforms. This is our source of funding for tier-two and tier-three interventions that our students need today and needed last year. And the fact that our grant funds were tied up in fundamental district personnel services prevented that from happening. So we can't wait to close, four years to close the achievement gap. We have to start making progress on that now, and this is the lever that we have available for us and that was intended by the state for us to do that.
If you could clarify that. And I think, and I guess the question comes on level of cost in terms of the presentation on the reform. What?
Is that taken off of the report? Is that yours here?
So the Alexia 44, the System 44, the tier-three intervention, are those special, where's the, where's the cost coming from? Is that, are those specialists that you're coming in, or is that, is that coming from the licensing? Is that coming from software?
Right. It's going to be software. What we're trying to build is internal capacity around these systems. So if you look at it from a tiered instructional standpoint, we're building professional capacity or professional learning around how to be able to implement these systems. That's the professional development of it. The professional learning is going to be the actual practices with that. So it underscores what Dr. Adamowski says. So we want to be able to accelerate closing the achievement gap. So this system will be able to help us with our tier-three. Alexia and Systems 44 is more of the tier-three. So those are the students that are really at that foundational level, really not accessing core content. So we have to be able to provide more explicit instruction around phonemic awareness, around fluency, around blending, in order for them to be able to start reading with that. So if we be able to couple that system and build capacity around instructional pedagogy and our intervention model, we'll be able to accelerate that. And then now students will be able to access content to be able to read. Then we're going to have to be able to close that gap as well, because they're still behind. So the acceleration of it, even though we're moving students in an exponential manner, we still have a gap to be able to close.
Thank you.
Mr. Serasis?
In regard to the aforementioned grants that Mr. Livingston and Mr. Setchinelli were referring to, are those perpetual grants or term grants that we need to reapply for every so often?
The Alliance Priority School District Grant is an entitlement grant. It is considered part of the permanent landscape. In fact, it is the state's major defense in the CJF case. The state's defense is that it has, in fact, been providing additional funds to the neediest districts in the state. So in the current environment, we don't anticipate that ending. It was passed into legislation by the General Assembly. It is not termed. It has been increased a couple of times since the initial passage, and this year was enhanced further by an Alliance District Building Grant. So we actually have a small amount of money now that can be used to make adjustments to schools for instructional purposes. And we're utilizing that. Mr. Hamilton and our building director has submitted two rounds of that so far that the board has approved, and we have one more round to go. We consider that a permanent funding unless there is some, you know, incredible change in the, you know, Supreme Court's decision regarding school finance or an entirely new finance system for the state. In that event, we would probably do better, since Norwalk is so discriminated against in the ECS form. So this is, this is permanent until something better.
And as a follow-up, well, are we under, having written grants with the Department of Health of State of Connecticut and Department of Education, are we under any sort of scrutiny as to our past misdirection of funds where they weren't being used for exactly what the grant was? Because I know a lot of times when you misdirect funds, even if it's by accident, an increased scrutiny happens, and I was wondering if that's the case and if it will affect us at all?
Not at the current time. During the time I served as a state employee, state special master, there were some rumblings within the department over the Alliance Grant as well, in Norwalk and several other places. None of that is retroactive. We've been transparent with the state in terms of our efforts to adjust and correct this issue, and I think the state is acting as a partner with us to accomplish that.
Thank you.
And those grants, if we're successful, the irony here is, if we're successful, we'll lose those grants.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the point on the grants and also the reforms. First is that, as has been explained, the reallocation of the grant is not simply like changing line items. Like, the line item change that we made from, you know, superintendent's budget to the Board of Ed budget was simply an internal accounting adjustment. This is a reallocation of the grant funding to what the purpose of the state legislation had stated. Now, interestingly, you know, following up on Mr. Serasis' question, we have in the past spent the money exactly as the grant said it would be spent. So the use of the grant to fund Briggs School, for instance, this, this kind of stuff, was disclosed to the state. So it's not something where, you know, we told them we were going to use it on one thing and we used it on another. We told them exactly how we were going to use the money. But what Dr. Adamowski has brought to our attention is that if you look at the underlying state legislation, it's really supposed to be doing these types of things, not, you know, funding one of your high schools. And he's trying to reallocate that to the, to the actual purpose that the, that the grant was supposed to sustain. The other thing I wanted to address is on the reform initiatives and what we're trying to do here and the talk about tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, that, you know, part of the special ed problem, I think, that we've had in the school system is that we basically have tier-one, which is described as your base school system, that your curriculum, your base teachers, your professional development, your technology, all the things that probably handle seventy-five percent of the student body. And in a well-run system, you've heard people use the term, you know, a continuum of services, that you then have additional levels of service that you can provide for children depending on what their needs are. And tier-two is a step up from tier-one, where you have maybe small group interventions. Tier-three, maybe one-on-one interventions. And since we really don't have that, as our system has been operating for decades, basically what we have is tier-one and special ed. That's it. So you, if your kids can, can handle the basic normal program, like the seventy-five percent of the kids, you're fine. But with nothing in between tier-one and special ed, you either lose kids entirely in the middle, or they end up going into special ed, because somebody who might be adequately helped by a tier-two or tier-three, since that isn't available inside the school system, they end up going into special ed and maybe getting an outplacement. So by building all of this into the system, you hopefully can pull a lot of kids out of special ed, because that isn't the only option left to them. There's things in the middle.
May I come? Yeah, we had this, we had this discussion before, and coming from a different district, I was, I'm still in disbelief. I just can't believe it's legal. And thinking about what you just said, there has been discussions off and on for a number of years now about supplemental instruction, reading specialist, and so. So if there was tier-one and nothing between tier-one and special ed, what was going on? There had to be something going on that was close or resembled tier-two interventions. It's just impossible not to. It'd be some kind of, you just can't ship kids into special ed like that. It's against the law. So what was going on? I really can't figure this out.
I think it's not that you shifted initially, but in the absence of tier-two, which is the most basic form of extra help for a student, generally it's group work, correct? Or in the absence of tier-three, which generally entails additional time and instruction and an adult to do it, in the absence of that, the gap grows wider until the student is so far behind that they qualify for special education. It's not that the shift occurs immediately. It occurs as a result of the gap, knowing over time, you know. We have, we have very interesting data in Connecticut from the NAEP results, which is the closest thing we have to a national test. And it's also the test that defines the gap for us. And so you look at in Connecticut, among low-income students in particular, you start off with preparation gap in, at the beginning of school, in preschool. If you look at our NAEP results, there's about a twenty-point difference in the gap at grade four, this is a fourth and eighth grade test, at grade four, by eighth grade goes to thirty points. About ten points is equivalent of a year in progress. So at that point, with the, the absence of those kinds of interventions and the ability to close the gap in between, you end up with about a three-year difference. And so at that point, yes, you qualify for special ed, because you're so far behind.
But this is coming dangerously close to just assigning kids to special ed by not having the tier-two.
I would say that, I think we had very well-intentioned teachers who wanted the best for their children. And in the absence of being able to get that other help, you turn to special ed.
What was also absent too is a true diagnostic, to be able to identify that information. And that's with our assessment plan, where we're going to implement the assessment system of NWEA, where it actually identifies the skills gap for each, for each student. Also, what was missing too was how to be able to interpret that information, so that creating that interracial reliability within the data to say, okay, these are our access and entry points in regards to tier-two and tier-three interventions, and this is going to be the district instruction that we're going to be able to provide for students.
Of course, of course. This is standard.
Right.
For the last thirty years, it's standard. That's, that's why I sound a little aggravated here. This is standard, as you all know, going back in the seventies and eighties.
I think I told you, one of our initial meetings, I thought we were about ten years behind in this area from state-of-the-art practice. And so we have, we have time to make up, but the good news is we know what to do. And we have the resources to do it, and we have a staff that is dedicated to it and wants to do it, and wants the training. Virtually every one of our schools recognizes this as their primary need. And the schools that are not tied along schools recognize it even more, because they had no resources to be able to address it in the past. So we have an obligation to them and to the children they serve to do this as quickly as we can.
Right. Then, then there's, there's two prongs. There's two perspectives we should take on reduction of the cost of special ed. Number one is reducing the outsourcing, the out-of-district tuition. But number two, we reduce the number of children who are eventually drifting into special ed because of the absence of the intervention.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. I know you are an education expert your own right, and you stated that very clearly.
Ms. O'Toole, Jim Durco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hamilton, you referenced that one of the biggest drivers of the budget is the out-of-district placement. Do we have any oversight or input as far as where the students are placed? You mentioned as far as Meriden. Is that something that we get, any kind of oversight, or is that mandated based on the PBT process?
It's, it's, I think I can answer that. It is basically a function of what the child's needs are and whether or not their needs can be met in the district. So if you have unique needs and there's only one provider for it in the state and they happen to be in Meriden, that's where you're going to go in the absence of the district offering a comparable program. Now, you'll know in the, you know, little description that we provided of the, of our request for the Special Ed Development Fund, that we are intending to bring two classrooms back to the district next year at the secondary ED level, and another autism class to Wood Pit School. And since I wrote this, it, it appears we may have another opportunity to bring a class in the hearing impaired back through development of a Soundbridge program. And that could be at the Brookside School once the preschool vacates that for the, for the Roosevelt Center. So we're looking for every opportunity to be able to offer comparable programs in district. This takes a lot of work. It takes political will. We have a basic strategy that we're using where we're going to have the actual provider, outside provider, run the program in Norwalk for the first year while our staff can get training and experience, and we can hire, in some cases, we will need to hire qualified personnel to do it, but we have a transition plan for, for this. But in, in the absence of us offering a comparable fund, the parent will be placed by law in whatever program that exists elsewhere that closes, that meets their child's needs.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bowman.
I just had a question about, basically, how does Briggs fare in the student-based funding system? Just seeing as, you know, I was just checking out their enrollment here and just knowing that they have, you're going to have basic costs such as a principal, you know, teacher, not just, you know, how are they faring in this system? And is anything being done to make sure that they can keep at least basic staff, meaning a gym teacher, a principal's teachers, all of those things, even under this student-based funding system? And I know, you know, the, we might want to kind of recruit more students, but at the same time, I, I feel that, that close, you know, that, that student-to-staff ratio that they have there is probably important to what they're doing. So how are we going to make sure that they survive in this?
So this is a basic equity issue because we should be putting the same amount of money behind every student at Briggs as we do behind every student in Norwalk High School or Bryan McMahon High School. And this is one of the things that the student-based budget allows us to do. So that student, if they were at Bryan McMahon, they now qualify for Briggs, their funding will come with them. Now, there are some issues though. Let's take PE as an example. Most students, there's a one-credit requirement for, for PE. So most students take PE their, most of them take it their freshman year, some will take it their sophomore year. So there is not a big need for PE at Briggs. We want the, in this model, the home high schools to provide more services to students. So they will send, for example, an art teacher or a music teacher on a rotating basis so the students can get their art requirement and so on. That's a basic responsibility of the, of the high school. We also want to start issuing those diplomas from the home high school as opposed to Briggs separately. Because again, this, this needs to function as an accelerated learning center for those students that need to get back on track. The basic criteria for Briggs at this point is to meet the needs of a student who is overage and undercredited, and we have state criteria for this. And so the instructional delivery model is a blended learning model, which is an online model, but it's very sophisticated and allows for the teacher who is proctoring it to provide small group instruction because there's a commonality of skills that the system produces that students need to be taught together with. So, you know, many of our students at Briggs need a flexible schedule as well. And so, you know, many students are there because they just can't get in for that first period at 7:30 in the morning every day. Or they are a parent themselves, or they have to work, or they have been sick, or a family member is sick and they have to contribute to their care. You talk to our students at Briggs, everyone has a story that, you know, is, is unique. And yet every student is striving for an education and to get their high school education. So this really just defines the compelling reason for Briggs, the reason why we have to treat it on an equitable basis, but that we also have to have an effective model in place for it. So it's just not a school where you have the traditional model on a smaller scale, but it's a school where you can accelerate and get back on track when you're far behind.
Thank you. And that clarifies a lot. And just one more question, just additionally, so the staff that, did they have, if they had our, so are those teachers kind of being circulated or replaced into some of the other schools and then they work on that rotating schedule? Or does that kind of mean that there are?
I think, I, I believe the, the, the plan for Briggs is that it will have all, it will have all four core area teachers, right, in the, supporting the blended learning model. So that would be English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. It will have other ancillary services, such as an administrator, a social worker, those kinds of things. Some of that is funded through our special ed budget as well. And then there will be some support from the high schools. There's a health, school-based health center there, and the high schools will be responsible on a rotating basis for sending teachers for some of the special areas, such as art and music, and PE if necessary, although there is no real gym there, so that, that becomes difficult. And then, you know, the, we, we want to be at a point where through the blended learning model, a student also has the option of returning to their home high school if they're now back on track. So this is not, not necessarily a situation where you have to stay the duration at Briggs and graduate. You would only do that if you're taking more than four years because you lost so much ground prior to starting.
Yes, Mr. Satchinelli?
Just one last question for clarity on the cost initiatives, specifically the reduced headcount. Where, where, where specifically is the headcount reduction? Is it, is that with teachers specifically, or is that support staff, or is that natural attrition, or was that somebody that was maybe assessed out? Or is it above that?
Yeah, I mean, we have a variety of changes in the proposed budget, some new positions, some position eliminations, the net, and some in the general fund and some in the grant funds. So the net reduction in the general fund is down by three positions primarily in the administrative area, and the grant funds are down by, I believe, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it was another 28 positions in the grant funds. So, you know, so we take reductions in really a variety of areas. But, you know, we've certainly left the classroom teachers that were in the current year budget all remain in the.
I think you will see our headcount going up as well. And it, it was really blunted this year. You know, if you look at our class size guidelines, we have at least five situations now in five different schools, which should have added a classroom teacher this year in a classroom section, but were unable to do so because there was no space. And so under those circumstances, we supplement with aides. Now that the Roosevelt Center hopefully will be online for the next school year, those preschool classes will consolidate, and there will be a limited amount of space in the eight schools where the classes are located. But in five of those, automatically, we will have another classroom. So our headcount will start going up because we are going to need more teachers. We grew by about 200 students this year. We will grow by about 200 students next year. And you can follow these enrollment projections in our strategic operating plan when you have the opportunity to, to review that.
Mr. Livingston?
Thank you.
Just two quick questions on the student-based budgeting. One, am I correct in assuming that you don't include the cost of operating the building when you come up with the numbers?
That's correct.
Okay. Second, is there any place that you can see, you projected out the difference of what an individual school would get in your proposal versus what they got prior year? People can see?
Yeah, we're working on that actually right now and talking about depending on, you know, what those numbers look like, we may look at some sort of phased approach, you know, to moderate any, any impact, but it depends on what those numbers look like. But we're working on that now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions? Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Meek.
I can finish up in about 30 seconds since it came up over and over again here, the idea about grants. Just to point out, and not that we're at any risk of these state grants, but, you know, private grants come and go on in the city over time. And when you start funding operational positions with those and the grant gets full, all of a sudden, you have a hole in your budget to fund operating positions. So, so even though those are at low risk, this is the right thing to do in terms of best practice so that we're never in a lurch for, for funding headcount because the grant is full at the last minute. So just wanted to add that. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you to the Board of Education members. Certainly thank you to the common council members. And again, this is a good process, I think, that opens the dialogue and gets us thinking and working together. At this point in time for the next meeting, I will turn the chair over to the Chairman of the Board of Education. It's more appropriate that he would chair this part of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
The rest of the meeting is, is going to be actions on a charter amendment resolution, also public comments on the budget for the edification of the board. Certainly council members are happy to have you remain, but you are not obligated to do so. And some are more anxious to get out than others.
I'll be prepared at the next meeting to report.
We'll take, we'll take like a five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene.